Go ahead and call our meeting back to order. Down to Section 8, County Manager Comments.
Chairman, I just want to point out a few things. You have in your packet a copy of the August Building Inspection Report. I hope you had time to look that over. You also have copies of the Planning Board minutes from the last two meetings. And I think it's a good idea that we start getting those. I've spoke with Travis so that there'll be an understanding of what happens. So you're going to start seeing those on a regular basis when they meet to kind of help out with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might interrupt.
Yes, sir.
One thing I noted, that members of the Commission are doing the prayer. We may need to advise them of the problems that we ran into. Because if a suit is good for one, it's good for everybody.
The next item, and I think I sent an email out, and I think there was a reference maybe to the Tax Office a little earlier in the meeting. But just as a reminder, I wanted to just recognize the Tax Office. From an email dated September 1st from Rita Miller. The Tax Office collected $8,201,485.61. And they collected that in 18 days. And they only had six of those days with their office at full staff. So of the total 2021 tax levies that were billed, they collected 65.77% in those 18 days. If that gives you an idea of how much collections came in in that time, which I think is just phenomenal. The next one, and this just kind of goes along. We, like several other employers, we've tried to maintain our operations, our services daily. We were unfortunately forced to close a tag office for about a week. Those were just circumstances that we could not overcome. But just about every department has been touched by the COVID situation in one way, shape, or form. And I think that our departments have done a really good job of filling those voids when those occurrences happened. And I wanted to recognize them. You know, we're now 18 months or so into the total COVID. And I just think that's a really good showing for the county's employees and their dedication and commitment. A little bit earlier in the meeting, we talked about the demolition of the E Step property. And I think there were some questions about what we can do with it. Because as indicated, there's very little use that we can come up with. But I do think that there's an opportunity maybe for either a rec committee or a steering committee of some type to look at that, to see what benefits that could be utilized from that. I've heard conversations about, in the past, about trying to link trail systems together. And that may be an opportunity as an access point and a potential link into an existing trail. So if you're all okay, I'd like to put together a group to look into that a little more. But that's pretty much it. This agenda is pretty packed. There's a lot of information, a lot of involvement, a lot of things going on. And I'll use the departments that were here today and the departments that'll be here the next time. I think you have seen some really good things come from our departments in their presentations and what they've done and the progress. And I'm proud of that. And I know you guys are as well, and I just wanted to make mention of that. But that's all I have.
Appreciate that. Do we need a motion to go ahead and do your committee today? Is that on the agenda other than the comment section?
If it's okay, I'll try to put some names together, come back to you at your next meeting for your consideration.
Next on the Justice of County Commissioner comments.
Just a few, Mr. Chairman. I don't know who the gentleman is that lives on Twin Oaks Mountain, but he's keeping the roadsides mowed with his lawnmower. He's out there with his weed eater. He's done a fantastic job making that part of that mountain look really nice. I appreciate that. And Bob goes, most of us go by there every day and can see what he does, and it's very nice. The Mountain Heritage Festival was, what, two weeks ago? And I think it was a big success. A lot of people there. Scaled down a little bit, but I think that was a big plus for the county. That's about it for me.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. Commissioner Michelle.
This past weekend, the Sheriff's Department did the run for a clause to raise money for the kids for Christmas presents this year. Very successful event. We've had lots of events this year. Music on Main, music in the park, Heritage Festival, Cruisins Poker Runs. So there's been lots of activity this year despite the COVID pandemic. And the town has voted to put in a splash pad at Kraft's Park. And I know that they're needing some funds to get that going. So good for them and hope we can raise those funds to get something for the kids.
Thank you. Mr. John.
I've got several things I'd like to go over. One of the things that I would like to bring to everyone's attention. Facebook, what's happening in Allegheny. I don't have the date on this, but this is a posting that is from, I won't use your last name, Donna, but "Two Large Dogs, No Tags, 10:30 PM. Black German Shepherd Was Scarring On His Face And Brown." Tactored Goat. Now, we spent, what, three, four months going over to rewrite the ordinance. In addition to that, we had two rescued fawns that were orphaned. They were rescued by the Department of North Carolina Wildlife Division. They were turned over to a rehab vet. The vet came out. Inside the pen were two dogs where they had dug underneath the fence and killed the two fawns. Now, one thing that we were very careful at, whenever we were working up the ordinance, we thought we had put everything in. Section 9 of the ordinance, nuisance. An animal or group of animals shall be considered a nuisance if private or public property is damaged. To me, the fawns were private property. They were turned over, they were orphans. Animals interfering with or attacking persons or other animals. Animals chase, snap at, or harass pedestrians, bicyclists, or other vehicles, or jump ahead. Animals running at large. Not under the control of a competent person by means of chain, leash, or other device, or is sufficiently near its handler to be under the direct control. Now, we made allowances for hunting dogs. That is a nuisance animal. If your animal is running loose and is not under direct control and it causes damage, you are responsible for the damage. You are responsible for any medical care that comes up. Not only that, but a nuisance citation is $100. Animal with no tags, that is an automatic confinement for 10 days to make sure that it does not have rabies. It's $20 a day because we're going to confine it in the facility that the county operates. So if you're out there and you are letting your animals run loose, I'm going to warn you now. If that dog is chasing sheep, cattle, or any other farm product that is sold by the pound, and it's out there running the poundage off, that farmer's going to kill it. Don't come in crying because somebody shot your dog because you were not controlling it and it was interfering with the farming operations. Now, that has gone on ever since I have been knocking around this Dagon County and did replies everywhere. You interfere with farm animals with that animal, he's going to kill it. He's not going to call the sheriff, and you're going to be out of an animal. And if animal control is called, they're going to come out. And if you are not satisfied, you've got two people you could call, the county manager and me. And I'm available 24/7 because I was the chair of the committee that came up with this ordinance. And I am emphatic, if a ordinance is not going to be enforced, it isn't worth the paper it's printed on. So let me know, and please be aware. The other thing, I've got two things I'd like to bring to the public awareness. In this country, it amazes me, the citizens of the country just go by and don't pay any attention to what's going on. I came in Friday morning, and I let the county manager know about a little thing that's going on in the Canary Islands. The island of La Palma is a volcanic island. That island has an active volcano on it that actually erupted today. But the reason why I let the county manager know, I listened to shortwave radio at night. Thursday night, there were warnings going up all over, and I went to two different stations. And the warnings were being put out on account of earthquakes in La Palma. From September 11th until last Friday night, they had 4,200 earthquakes, and they were able to measure them as the lava began to come up through the mountain. Now, why is he worried about this? There is a section of La Palma Island that is 1.5 miles wide, nine miles long. It began to upheave and began to move. If that section of the island had fallen into the ocean, in eight hours, there would have been a 66-foot tidal wave striking North America on the East Coast. New York, Manhattan would have been wiped out. Charleston, South Carolina, Savannah, name them, Norfolk. 100 million American lives would have been in jeopardy. From the time that landslide, which would have been 700 times the landmass from St. Helena, if it had hit the water, eight hours, and you are not going to evacuate. And not one thing on the national news, nothing. So you want to depend on the government to take care of you? You want to know how well we're being taken care of? So far, on the border, they have identified leprosy, smallpox, chickenpox, polio, scabies, and measles. 14,000 Haitians sitting down there. They didn't get there overnight. Now, we have had, since the first of the year, over 1.5 million illegals that have been captured and let loose in this nation. And they have been transported all over the nation. And if you want to know where they go, start looking for outbreaks of scabies, chickenpox... And if you want to know where they go, start looking for outbreaks of scabies, chickenpox, measles. And I haven't heard of anything of leprosy as of yet. To end on a good note. We received a letter from Dale R. Folwell, state treasurer of the state of North Carolina praising us for being taken off the watch list for the state of North Carolina because of our financial situation. Now, we are not completely off because they recommended we have 33% reserve fund balance. Ours is only at 17%. But praise is justified for the county manager and his staff. Now, I make fun of him. If you want to see this man get his back up, you mentioned violating his budget. He gets harder than lips on a redheaded woodpecker. But he has taken us from the watch list to where we are well on the way to be in a financially secure situation. We never, he came in, he told us that he could get it done. He's not failed us. But it's a joint effort between him and his staff. We're, it's very easy for our job because he recommends, and if we don't agree, well and good. But I guarantee you, you're not going to bust his budget. Please watch. He, he's got that microscope out there. So, Michael, I'd like to express my thanks to you and your staff for the outstanding work that you have done, bringing us more into compliance to identifying things and making the hard decisions that this required. Please pass to your staff mine, and I'm sure that the board will support me in the praises that we give you. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, I am ready to go. Well, no, we've got your comments and then we'll get down to the real nitty gritty.
Appreciate the comments, sir. Commissioner John, I don't have too much to add. Same as John, we appreciate and know how we got our fund balance and who to attribute that to. And it's, it's county manager, all department heads, and everybody that works here. And that's how we've got to where we're at, and that's how we're going to get to where our goal of going is. So we appreciate that. Just to mention the fair coming up September the 30th through October the 3rd, out at the Higgins Fairground, which will be the fair. Plus, they've got carnival rides this time and a, and a whole lot of fun games lined up to have, a lot of competition. Encourage everybody to come out and take part of that. Mountain Heritage was a good, good festival in town a couple of weeks ago. That run went over real well and beautiful weather. So was the Run for Claws. And I want to add a little bit, that's, that's a great thing too. And they had the, I can't, the name forgot me, the bicycle tour we had here two or three weeks ago. Came through the county anyway, and I know they came through Piney Creek and all around. But the point I'm going to make refers back to John and the dog thing. The sheriff sent the deputies out riding, riding the route to make sure that there were no loose dogs. And he stopped along the way and talked to people that had dogs tied up. And they were made aware of, of the bicycles coming through and to keep them tied. I thought that was a very good thing to avoid anybody getting bit or anything like that. So that worked out real well. And the music on Main has, has been good all summer long. And in October, the month it ends, I believe, right? And so was Kraus Park, it ends in October. So everybody come out and take advantage of that. And once again, just thank all the county staff for all they've done through the pandemic. And we're all in this thing to get through it together. And we appreciate, we appreciate everybody and what everybody does. So moving on down, we have requests for a closed session. General Statute 143-318.11.A-6. And also, General Statute 143-1318.11.A-3. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion to second, go into closed session, all in favor?
I ask that you include David Spicer and April Ham.
Including David Spicer and April Ham on the closed session. My apologies. We got a motion to second, all in favor? Full roll.